To the meeting of the Granville City Council, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Present.
Merrinda.
Present.
Nordhook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwall.
Present.
And Mayor Moss.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Sines from Granville Genesee Congregational Church will be giving the invocation. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation, then we're going to follow that with a pledge of allegiance. Pastor, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Let me be here. If you would, let's all pray together. Heavenly Father, on behalf of the people of our city of Granville, we thank you for all that you've provided us. We know that we are blessed to live and work in this city. We enjoy the rivers, the streams, the parks, and all the natural surroundings that your hand has made. We are equally blessed with the people of this city who feel a sense of community and show support, love, and care for each other. And Lord, we ask that you be present here with us today. Bless and guide these dedicated folks as they work to make Granville an even better place to be. Grant them wisdom in their decisions. Grant them unity in their efforts. Grant them respect for each other's knowledge and grant them a servant's heart. Bless them with a peace in their lives and the support of this community. And Father, we ask that you bless and guide all the people who serve this city, who watch over us. Please watch over our first responders, our police, firefighters, EMTs, and keep them safe as they work to keep us safe. And be with all of our city workers, whose efforts enhance our quality of life. Lord, guide all of our city leaders, whether church, business, or government, to keep the best interests of all in their guidance. And Lord, we ask for these blessings through your great love and mercy, and in the name of your Son, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, for being with us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I apologize for the way I was dressed, but the chief just signed me out on work release about 20 minutes ago. But it's all good. He promised me tacos on the way back.
All right. Thank you. Oh, you have before you an agenda, and you also have an amended agenda. What's different about the agenda is there's a city manager's request for a closed session to talk about pending litigation, commercial tax appeals regarding Granville Inns and Suites. So that has been added. So is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. And I wanted, just for the benefit of any guests who might be here tonight, or people who may be watching later this week, one item that is not on the agenda that you may have anticipated was a report from the city attorney about the landmark.
Grandmark.
I'm sorry, Grandmark, lodging on 28th Street. Our city, our regular city attorney is out right now, but we have Matt with us. But that, that report is not done. We anticipate it next meeting?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay. So just wanted to clarify that. It's not on the agenda tonight. So if you've come for that, it's not going to be on the agenda, but you're, of course, welcome to stay as long as you want. Just one special guest that I would like to welcome tonight. He is a Calvin University graduate and also received his MBA from Calvin University, and is now working on his MPA, Master of Public Administration. And it's my son, Isaac Moss. So Isaac, I thought tonight would be a good night to come. There's a little bit of everything. We're talking about finances, rezoning, recruiting a new city manager, so anyway. And I'm sure he really appreciated that introduction. So we have the minutes from our last meeting, December 18, so a while ago. You've had a chance to review those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Motion support. Any additions, corrections, comments? Kind of extensive, because we had a lot of nominations to a lot of boards and commissions. So I'm not sure I've seen minutes quite that long, but Marcy, excellent job again. So we have motion support. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great. We have presentation of bills, again, in kind of a hefty amount, about $778,000 tonight. Ken, anything you'd like to point out before we open it up for questions?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. It is a large amount, again. Once again, we're in a three-week gap, so it's, instead of a two-week period, it's a three-week period of invoices. And then, as we've seen recently, especially at the end of the construction season, a lot of the project wrap-up type invoices are on there. And only 15% of this is actually general fund. The bulk of it's in the utilities, both water and clean water. So just the highlights I noticed for council, I forgot to ask get with Chief May on this, but on page two, there's invoice for Mekoff Electric for the exhaust where the fire department is. I don't know if that's a progress billing or a complete one. Do you know, Mike?
That's a complete billing.
Complete billing, okay. It's about $19,000 on that effort. On page three, not a large amount, but just under $11,000, Michigan Wood Fibers. I mention that because that's the recycling cost to go with the leaf program the city runs every year and would have wrapped up at the end of November. On page three, there's a $13,000 bill for the Kent County Road Commission. It's the second half of payments that the city made for maintenance work the road commission performed for the city on 44th Street, I-196. If you've been out there, you've seen the mastic that was applied and trying to seal that up and get us a few more years of use there. Largest bill, I believe, on there tonight is $142,000. Actually, I'll call it the second largest, for Davis Construction. You've been seeing progress billing for several years on the silo handling project. This actually is the final billing. It includes releasing the $120,000 of retainage that the city had kept to cover against final corrections and adjustments, and those have been made now. So we're done with billing for that project. And then the largest pair of bills, actually, it's one invoice, but it's kind of broken into two components, is the monthly water bill for the city. Our actual usage was about $71,000 for the month, but you'll notice the bill was more like $180,000. And Jane's got explanation for why we have a higher amount for this monthly billing.
So my question with Idaho County, at the end of the year, we reconciled how much we charge Iowa for sewer. They only does the same for water. So this includes their reconciliation, which they estimated at the end of the year, which we booked as payable to the city for about $108,000 due to increased capital costs that they did not anticipate until they go through their reconciliation process. So while we paid it in '22, '23, '24, it was actually charged to water expense in '22, '23. So we're just making that hole and clearing that gap.
So if you're looking for a comparison to the monthly water bill, this would not be the one you want to compare, but the $71,000 is on par with our usage for November. So those are the items that I highlighted for council tonight. And if there are questions beyond that, we'd be happy to try to answer those for council.
Questions for Ken or Jane? Okay. If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $778,31.64?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
Yeah, support. Yeah, final questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merrinda.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Great. We have a presentation tonight. I think with some good news. Doug Radewell from the CPA firm, going to talk about our year-end audit. And our year, our fiscal year, ends June 30, so it's been a while, but.
It is.
Yes.
We're a little bit later than normal.
Welcome.
Thank you. Staff did, staff had some challenges this past fiscal year, so, but not to worry. Things were all completed on time for the state reporting and so forth, so the report was uploaded, and it was, the F-65 has been completed, and other state reporting was completed timely, so, so everything should be in good shape. And it was the last of our 43 municipal audits we do for June 30, so glad to be here. I want to point out, I guess, before we get started, that due to the state chart of accounts changing around things, Jane took some time to go through and reclassify a couple things within the audit report that has been presented in previous years. So you'll kind of see that, and I'll point them out as we go through a few of the slides here. But, but first of all, if you flip through your booklet to page one, that is the opinion on the financial statements. And you can see in the second paragraph from the top of page one, if I can get to it, the second paragraph says, starts with, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city." So that's a clean, unmodified opinion, and certainly what you want to have when you have an audit completed. So that's a good, unmodified opinion. And then, in addition to that, "We audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and also government auditing standards." The government auditing standards results in a report on internal control and compliance, which is the very last page of the book, page 69. And that also is clean. If there were any material deficiencies or material weaknesses, we would have to report those to you there, and there are none to report. So it's a good, good, clean opinion. And now we can take a look at a few of the numbers. I won't pain you too badly, I hope. But pages five through 10, Management's Discussion and Analysis. If you just look at the top of page five, this is, just gives you an idea of, of an overview of the financial statements, some of the big things that happened during the year. Details a lot of the street projects that were done, the vehicles that were purchased and that kind of thing. Some of the ARPA projects were completed during, and in progress during the year. Major streets, a lot of money was spent. And if you go to page 11 through 13, these are called your government-wide financial statements. It's a picture of everything within the city. It includes all of your capital, assets, all of your debt, your pension liability, and that kind of thing. And at the end of the day, the governmental activities, which encompasses everything except the water and clean water activity, so all your street funds, the general fund. But at the bottom of page, page 11, on the left-hand column, you'll see $3,902,000. So that's a positive number after everything is all considered, and that's good. There's many municipalities throughout the state that have a negative number there because of the pension liability that's recorded. Your pension liability is about halfway up the page, 7.5 million. So even with that considered, it's still a positive unrestricted net position, so that's very good. And then the next couple pages, I can show you in pictures instead of on, in the book, but just a summary of, this is pages 12 and 13. So you can kind of see, this matches up your expenses with what's called your program or direct revenues for each of the functions, the general government, judicial, public safety, and so forth. And you can see the difference, or the dark line, the difference between the dark and light bars there, the expenses very often exceed the revenues, and that's what's covered by your property taxes and state shared revenues. So you can see, for example, general government, a bit unusual that the program revenues are that high, but that includes the ARPA money that's being spent, because that was considered lost revenue, just the way it was accounted for. Public Works is a bit unusual as well. That's Act 51 money. It makes up your program revenues, and then the streets that are built with that money actually get capitalized rather than expensed. So it looks a little bit skewed that way. But all in all, nothing odd or unusual that I noted there. And this is just a pie chart of where your revenue's coming from. 52% is coming from property tax, 23% from operating grants. And again, a big chunk of that operating grants for this year, it's a little bit unusual to be at 23%, but it includes both the ARPA money that was spent, as well as the Act 51 street monies. So that's why that's a little bit high. And state shared revenue is at about 13%. And then we'll get into more the, the general fund. So pages 14 through 17, these are the, I call them the fund bases, financial statements. And this is more what you'd be accustomed to seeing throughout the year with your budget to actual information. And for, before the charts, on page 14, the balance sheet, just a couple things I wanted to point out here, and that's way at the bottom. This year, we have an amount set aside or assigned for subsequent year expenditures of 3.9 million, and you'll see what that did to a few of the charts here in a minute. There's remaining unassigned or available fund balance at the end of June 30 of 2.7 million. So in very good shape, and the general fund as well. And I'll, we'll have a few graphs on that. And right, almost smack in the middle of the page, under the ARPA column, you'll see an amount that says unearned revenue on page 14 of just over $1 million. And that's the amount of ARPA money that's remaining to be spent in the coming fiscal year. So just, or years, just to point that out. And then page 16 is the, the income statement for the governmental funds. And the left-hand column, again, is the general fund. Decreased fund balance a little bit, 575,000. The streets were up somewhat, so all in all, in good shape still. And this is, now the graphs kind of depict some of the information on page 16 historically. And you can see property taxes of the general fund. This is, again, just the general fund. It goes steadily increases. State shared has been increasing as well, and the other category has remained very consistent. State is up just a little bit more than it normally would be, because the, one of those reclassifications I mentioned was that the personal property tax money that, that the state is funding, since it's no longer charged as property tax, but the personal property tax of about 400,000 roughly is included in the state revenue this year. So that's why that took a little bit of a jump. And then expenditures by function, so this is the, all the different functions, just again, and just the general fund. And you can see what really affects this for the most part is if there's big capital projects, which there were during the year. So under the general government category, that's up somewhat this year because of, there was a lot of HVAC and other equipment that was purchased during the year. Public safety took a big jump. That's because there was a new fire truck purchased. And under the recreation category, there was a lot of park work done, a new playground at one of the, one of the parks and so forth. So that's what, what that's about. And then transfers out is up quite a bit, because we accounted for the property taxes just a little bit differently this year. Okay, this is a, this is the weird one. So I mentioned the 3.9 million, so unassigned fund balance is now at just under 20% of your annual expenditures and transfers. So nothing to, to be too worried about. There, there was, I went back and looked in the previous fiscal year of '22. The information we had didn't have anything set aside for '22, '23, but I believe there probably was, and we didn't have enough detail last year to have that number, but about $1 million was set, actually set aside last year compared to 3.9 set aside this year. So there's a lot of upcoming capital that, that has been budgeted. Whether it will happen in '23, '24 or not, we don't, we don't know for sure, but I'll tell you next year. So that, but that's why that line took a drastic drop-off there. And this, again, is the property tax revenues. Property tax revenues across all funds is actually up slightly. And here, it shows it dipped down just a teeny bit, and that's, again, because of that reclassification of the state shared portion of personal property taxes. So our intent next year, when we have a little bit more time, is we'd like to go back and, and redo the, all the past fiscal years, so that you can kind of see more of a steady increase. But there actually was a real increase in property taxes of about 700,000, so, which is what we would have expected. Okay, and then the water sewer funds on pages 18 through 20. On page 18, yeah, everything looked pretty good in here. On page 18, the, the left-hand column, sewer fund or clean water fund, is the unrestricted net position of 6.5 million. The water has 2.9 million. And midway up, or right near the top of the page, under the sewer fund, there's restricted cash and pooled investments of 1.2 million. There's also additional cash and investments of 7.6 million. So it's in very good shape. That amount of restricted is set aside by bond requirements. So the bonds require that you keep that money set aside. And then on page 19, which you can kind of see on these, the slide up here on the sewer or clean water fund, this year, there was an actual loss in the fund of about 500,000. So just something to be aware of. We also look at the operating income. If you compare just strictly operating revenue to operating expenses, it's a negative 750,000. Depreciation built into that number is 1.8 million. So you're still, still okay from a cash flow standpoint, but you want to make sure that you're covering that depreciation with, with rates and so forth. And water fund looked a little better. There was a positive change in net position there, about 500,000, so the water was in good shape. Or better shape. And then just by way of footnotes, I wanted to point out a couple of them. Page 31, right at the top of the page, this is your over expenditures of your, your budget, very, very minimal. And this was a, a new contract that was in the general fund that principal and interest didn't get budgeted. Not a big deal. It's a, we didn't have to report that to the state, because it was small enough to be under their threshold for reporting. And then page 34, wanted to point out, I said there was a lot of capital projects going on. This is your capital asset summary on this footnote. And you can see a lot of additions, both under governmental activities, and a lot of additions under the water and sewer activity, the business-type activities. There is a huge amount of construction in progress, which I believe you just mentioned you made the final payment on tonight, or approved. So that will come into the, the regular capital assets this current fiscal year. One other thing, or two other things to point out. Page 37 is the pension. So timing couldn't be worse for the pension. The pension is actually reported on a 12/31 year-end, and at 12/31/22, it reported a decrease in investments of 1.3 million, which drove your net pension liability up by about 1.7 million. So the liability increased pretty drastically for, for that year. Hopefully, it's doing better this year. We won't know until we get the final reports, but I think the investments at least are looking better. And then, just a couple items on page 45, way at the end of the footnotes. So at year-end, the city had outstanding commitments of approximately 5.8 million related to the city's different various construction projects underway. And after year-end, there was actually an aerial fire apparatus purchase of 1.3 million. So we disclosed those in the footnotes, even though they happened after the end of the year, because we're made aware of them, so. Are there any questions I can answer?
Questions about any of the financial reports? Wada?
That was a pretty fast overview.
Well, charts are always helpful.
We'd like to give our finance director an opportunity to highlight anything that she wants to point into council.
Another page that he didn't hit that I like to, I like to look at, because it tells us kind of how well we're doing our job, is the budget to actual for the general fund. And we had an unexpected variance at the end of the year of about $739,000 in revenue. The majority of that is the $800,000 grant that we received from the state. We were not allowed to show that as revenue earned from '22, '23, because we didn't use it to pay for the fire truck that we procured until '23, '24. So we had to, we had to, we had to do an entry that decreased our revenue by about 800,000. So that's what the majority of that particular variance is for revenues overall. And you can see it right there on the state line item of the $800,000.
She's on page 55.
I'm sorry, sorry. I meant page 47. It's 47.
47.
That's the commentary. That's the 5.
Okay, 47. All right.
So if you look at total revenues, way off to the right, under the variance positive, negative column, you can see the total revenues had a negative variance of 739,000. That, what that means is we did not take in revenue that we budgeted and anticipated coming in. And there is a rule that says it's material, you can't record a revenue if it's for something that's in the next fiscal year. So we, it's on your balance sheet as deferred revenue, and we will be recording that this year and making a budget adjustment to make sure that we get that into our budget for this year. And conversely, at the bottom, where you see net changes in fund balance, well, we can look at the total expenditures first. We had a variance of 1.2 million. We budgeted to spend 14 million. We only spent roughly 13 million. So we had a positive variance, which means we spent less than we said that we were going to. And again, most of that was the ARPA projects that we had planned to do that didn't quite get done at the end of the year, carried over into construction progress. And we will show those, the remaining projects that will be outstanding next year. So then finally, third line from the bottom, net changes in fund balance, that's the other benchmark I looked at. So at the end of our final budget, we said, we think we're going to spend 1.2 million more than we took in in revenues. We ended up only spending $574,000, even with that revenue adjustment. We still ended up very, very healthy with that, which pushed $630,000 into our fund balance, well, didn't take it out of fund balance that we had anticipated. So I would like those numbers to be way closer next year. It's something that we are focused on and working on, but those are things that I benchmark, because it tells us how well we're doing our job monitoring our financials.
Questions for Jane, on any item, or Doug? Questions? Okay, thank you very much. Ken, do we usually?
We usually have a motion to accept the report.
Okay. Sir, a motion to accept a audit report?
Support.
And support. Any comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merrinda.
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate being here.
Thank you, Jane, as well.
I hope you don't miss all the game tonight.
Does it rain?
As he leaves. Yeah, as he leaves. Yeah, as he.
Time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council? Please just come up to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what you're thinking about.
Merrinda Paul, 3215 30th Street. Is there any time in the near future where they're going to fix prairie between Woodbine and Ivan Rest heading east? It's all crumbling there. It's, you have to move all the way over to go on two tracks to go through there. And I didn't know if that had come up, that it's getting fixed anytime soon.
Yeah, we can, we can ask our DPW director, Charlie Sunblab, that that segment, I think it's mainly because of the large trees that are there.
Yes, oh, yeah.
That always is the first part that wears out on that street. So plans for maintenance, Charlie?
This spring.
This spring.
This spring, the prairie walls.
Okay, cool. Second, is that mural still going to go in that alley that they were talking about at one time? Wasn't there going to be some mural that was put?
I think you're referencing, the DDA was looking at entering a contest for a micro grant, but we did not receive that micro grant.
Okay, because it's kind of a silly place to put a mural, but nobody walks.
Well, we didn't win, so you don't have to.
Good. I just, somebody said something the other day. And thank you, we have a fence by the hotel. So it's a step, but we still do notice about, what, 3:00 in the morning, the kids going by with the backpacks. We don't know where they're coming from, but there, a lot of other houses are being hit again, and they all have backpacks and gray hoodies, and, so hopefully, we can do something more with that, so. But yay, we got a fence. So that's a huge step. We don't have to look, at least that way, a little bit, so.
Great. And just recommend, you know, keep your eye on our agenda online.
Yep, yep, yep.
And just see.
Oh, it's all right. We just said, well, we'll listen to what's going on anyway.
Right, right. And we anticipated that we would have that, the attorney's report, so.
So like I said, that's helped, but now we're noticing on the cameras, we're not sure where they're coming from, but yeah, they got backpacks, and a whole bunch of houses got hit over in Higgins, and all that kind of fun stuff, so.
Thanks for your comments.
I probably should just mention that the fence that So that was not, you know, ordered by the city in any way. It was voluntarily constructed by the property owner.
Great, thank you. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? That was a great chance. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Jay, last name, address three three zero zero twenty eighth street. So I'm the managing partner for Grandmark Lodging. Right, I heard about all the incidents last, in the December meeting, leading up to it, from a Facebook post that one of my clients brought up to me, that concerned citizens have been coming to City Hall and asking for something done with the property. So my, my, my questions were that how many of those citizens went to the property itself and asked if there could be something done rather than coming to the City Hall and asking them to shut it down, basically, you know? So after, after looking through online comments and posts, wasn't really getting anywhere besides having high-def cameras, which we already had for the past three years, and a fence was recommended. Obviously, we put up the fence within what, one or two weeks? Yeah, my only question is if there's any, any, any suggestions that people may have, you could direct it to me. My email's at abvi77@yahoo.com for people that don't have a pen or write it down. Obviously, the city is posting this online. They can go back and get my contacts from there. My also phone number's going to be two six nine seven, two six nine nine six three two four four eight for anyone that has any more suggestions for the hotel to operate in their favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Marcy, were you able to get both of those? Okay, you were fast, right there. Anybody else here like to address the council? Last call. Okay, we'll go on then. Under ordinances and resolution, we've got a zoning ordinance regarding thirty-two twenty-nine twenty-sixth Street rezoning. Ken, you want to, there was a great memo in there, so it's pretty self-explanatory, but anything you'd like to point out on that one?
Yeah, the, the supporting documents are, I think are really helpful from McKenna, our planning consultant. And this process started before I returned to the city, so I'll look to JR to fill in some blanks on it. But essentially, there's a, a currently zoned residential lot on twenty-sixth Street that abuts the eastern boundary of a parcel that's commercially zoned in front of Chicago Drive. And the request was to rezone that residential lot to commercial. And I think the explanation that was given was that ultimately, these would be combined or could be combined as a result of a site plan approval of an actual project there into a single parcel. So there was a public hearing held and not a lot of comment was taken. I can't remember JR if there was anybody from the neighborhood even. I don't think so.
There was not.
Okay. And now, Planning Commission then on Wednesday recommended that the city council, in fact, favorably, favorably approve a rezoning of that property to C-three Highway Commercial District, which is consistent with the Chicago Drive fringe. The material that you've got gives you a list of the uses that are allowed in that zone district. And obviously, it's a fairly major change from the residential that's there, but if you're familiar, obviously, with that area, that all the frontage backs up to residential, that whole stretch of Chicago Drive, it's an odd angle and some interesting parcels that result. JR, anything in particular?
No, I guess I just wanted to add that it is a vacant lot that the owner, Mr. Kirkstr, does own, and he's looking to expand his commercial business that way. And if you look at the stair stepping of our rezoning map, you know, we took all those things into account. Also, what's across the street, across twenty-sixth Street is also still commercial. So we took those things into consideration as well, knowing that there could be commercial expansion, what does that look like across the street?
Carolyn, anything I missed on that?
Yeah, you answered the question too. Was there public comment? Is there, are some residences in?
It's on tonight, Mr. Mayor, for the, the first step of ordinance adoption, which would be introducing and tabling it. And at the second meeting, two weeks from now, council could then consider a final approval of the change. I don't know if anybody's here tonight from, I don't believe so, from the applicant, but they may well attend final approval and be able to answer any other questions from council.
Okay, is there a motion to introduce ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero two to rezone three two two nine twenty-sixth Street from the present residential to C-three Commercial Highway District?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Galdarlos?
Yes.
Merrenga?
Yes.
Northwood?
Yes.
And Merrimas?
Yes. And is there a motion to table ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero two?
So moved.
Motion support. Do this on a voice, voice vote? Okay, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes, yes.
And the opposition, please say no. Okay, great. Next item, also a zoning ordinance amendment is regarding two-family dwelling units in different parts of the city. And again, there's good memo on that, but Ken, any comments, you or JR or Carolyn?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just briefly explain it, just to, to get it started here, but this is one that actually has even deeper backstory, I guess, for it. So I'll defer to Councilman Vanderwal and our, our Planning Commission Chair in the audience to fill in the blanks. But what the Planning Commission recommended after a public hearing last week was amending the current zoning ordinance to allow two-family dwelling units in the R-one C Zone District. R-one has multiple varieties, A, B, C, and duplexes are permitted in the other residential districts that I've mentioned, but they're not currently permitted in the R-one C. And the R-one C is generally an older section of town. It's, you know, parts of the original city that have smaller lots. In some cases, there's still alleys that exist. And I think it was probably never considered to be a possible use because the lots are generally smaller there. But in researching this with our planning consultant and subsequent conversation with the Planning Commission, there was a comfort level with allowing duplexes in, on lots that are greater than a half acre in size, and there was a surprising number of those in that zone district. So you can see some of that information in the supporting material that you've gotten. This came about as a result of a, a particular instance on one particular property. Maybe JR, it's a good place for you to jump in.
Yeah, you know, this was one of those times where, you know, a resident brings up something that we may have overlooked. A young couple who bought a fairly large home on a fairly expansive lot, and the house was naturally split up to be considered a, a two-dwelling. And they said, all we need to do is just close off this door, and we have a whole separate auxiliary, not auxiliary, you know, two-dwelling unit, own kitchen, own everything. And of course, they've been jumping through hoops now with us for months and months, but I think the Planning Commission got it right. And if you see this map, there's not a ton of those lots, but they happen to live on one of those, and they are helping to improve our housing crisis, you know, in kind of a, an organic way. And so I, kudos to the residents to, to find a way to help solve some solutions. Will any of these other property owners come forth and try to build a two-dwelling? I, I don't know, but at least we now have some guidelines in place that will make it simpler if they do.
And if I recall right, that becomes a special land use in the zone district. So if, anything that would come from this, if the ordinance is approved, would result in notice and public hearing and the usual process for that.
Extra precautions and some extra control by, I guess, the city per se. Did I miss anything on that one, Carolyn?
No, that's, but we did have a particular property owner that came to us, and the solution was quite simple. Duplex works, except it's not allowed. So we worked and we struggled with how we could get it legally. And then we, as JR said, we talked about it and found out there are a lot of pieces of property that really could be developed to duplexes without too much trouble. But we had to find a vehicle, and that's where we came up with this special land use permitted.
Any questions for Ken or JR or the Chair of the zoning?
Yeah.
Planning Commission. Okay, sounds like a good solution and does help with the housing need. Is there a motion to introduce ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero three in ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance that we just talked about?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Galdarlos?
Yes.
Merrenga?
Yes.
Northwood?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Merrimas?
Yes. Now is there a motion to table this ordinance till next meeting?
Support.
Motion support. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. And the opposition, please say no. Okay, great. Consent agenda, long one, but it should look familiar to everybody because annual kind of things on here. So we have some reports, which I thought, the first one, the PCI report about new construction in Granville, I thought was very interesting. I looked at it, and yeah, a lot of new homes on what we call the bill property and as well as other constructions. So totaling about thirty-four million dollars worth of construction value. So it's a nice addition to the city of Granville. So we've got that PCI report. We also have the Trocers Report from December. And then we also have, I think we do this every year, waiver and consent about two-thousand eighteen personal property taxes. Those are some taxes that are just basically noncol, kind of like writing them off, right? And they total, I don't have the number right.
Less than four.
Yeah.
How much?
Less than four.
Four, oh, here it is, four forty-three, forty-four, which is a ministerial amount, but yeah.
I just looked percentages in the memo.
Yeah.
The collectible, there's a lot of zeros.
Lots of zeros, which is good.
It's really good.
Before, before, before that. So that's in there. And then we have a lot of, another resolution establishing the Board of Review twenty-twenty-four meeting dates. We also have a resolution to establish the twenty-twenty-four poverty exemption guidelines. And I don't know how many people avail themselves of that, but I think it's quite a small amount. And the numbers come from?
Federal government.
Federal government. So it is what it is. Then there's another, a number of resolutions. Grand Rapids Community College, Granville Public Schools, Kent Intermediate School District, Wyoming Public Schools, and just designating us or we agree to collect those taxes.
Summer taxes.
Summer taxes. We also have a resolution to name Ken as a street administrator designation because he's acting, acting city manager. We also have purchase order and requests from the Clean Water Plant for some laboratory equipment, and there's a memo also on that. So approval of a consent agenda because of the purchase would be in the best interest of the city. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Support. Anybody have any questions about any of these items? Scott or Todd, anything you want to add to your memos?
I have a question, stuff that's critical to our lab that's been in service for quite a few years. Our asset management program, kind of highlighted those as the next pieces to be replaced in the lab.
Motion support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwal?
Yes.
Galdarlos?
Yes.
Merrenga?
Yes.
Northwood?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
And Merrimas?
Yes. Ken, city managers report water meters.
Yeah, we'll ask Charlie to answer questions about the, the brief memo he's got, basically replacing a portion of what are twenty-seven currently failing meters out there in one area of the city. Go ahead, Charlie.
In the Bucktown area, they're all installed at the same time, and the battery is dying out, and we can't remotely read them. You're getting dashes, and they slowly start to fail. The cheapest way to fix them is follow-up assembly, including, unfortunately, the lead technology, so getting more now.
And these are essentially sole source because we've got to put back into them the same parts that are coming out of them.
Okay, so approval of that. Oh, I'm sorry, JR.
It's okay. Charlie, out of curiosity, are these some of the newer meters that we've replaced? Or are these like?
No, these are older ones.
These are the old ones?
Been in there for twelve years.
Okay, so now we're, we're going through the process of replacing. These are not faulty new ones?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, when you first said Bucktown, I thought, well, those should be new, but then I thought, yeah, it's been a while. I mean, twelve years, yeah, that goes fast.
And these, these are commercial meters in that Bucktown development?
Yes.
Not residential?
They're totally commercial meters.
Okay, so from the, what was that, twenty-twelve or so that that development went in? They're about twelve years old, you said?
I said I was old, twelve, thirteen, seventeen.
Any other questions? Now, is there a motion to approve purchase from Aetna Supply, new water meters, in the best interest of the city in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars?
So moved.
Motion, support. Any other final questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galdarlos?
Yes.
Merrenga?
Yes.
Northwood?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
And Merrimas?
Yes. Ken, city manager's search proposal.
Yeah, in November, council had directed that you wish to engage a consultant to provide search services for the city manager position as you had done prior to my retirement in twenty-twenty-two. And so I was asked to get proposals from a number of firms, and we received those, I think, just before your last city council meeting. So we didn't take any action at that point, wanting to make sure everyone had an opportunity to review those proposals. They came from SGR, MML, Walsh Municipal Services, Gov HR, and Baker Tilly. And we had provided a summary sheet that we recopied into your packet that hopefully it made it a little easier to glance as opposed to going through the, all the pages of the proposals to see the timelines, how they might vary from one to another, the fees, which do definitely vary, and a couple other of the, the critical components there, including the assigned representative. The next step would be for council to choose the consultant that you wish to work with. And if we can determine that tonight, we can activate them as soon as their schedule allows and, and begin that process of trying to solicit interested parties who wish to perform, to be an applicant in reviewing those things like the, the council's priorities for the skills and capabilities that you're looking for in a, in a new manager, as well as the, the preferences for staff as well. So generally, those timelines range from twelve to sixteen weeks, which is, I think, what you probably expected because that's probably about what it took last time. The fees range greatly, and that's primarily because the previous search was conducted by the Michigan Municipal League, and they did have a promise that came as part of their proposal then that if there was a voluntary departure in, within twelve months of the new manager being selected, that they would conduct a follow-up search, only charging for some, some of the direct costs. And so you'll, you'll note that four of these proposals are for pretty significant amounts of dollars. The cheapest of the other four is around thirteen thousand dollars, thirteen thousand eight hundred. The highest is twenty-six thousand, nine fifty. With regard to the MML proposal, their estimate on the cost of posting and background check that would be a portion, the city would be responsible for paying for this time around is two thousand eight hundred dollars. So a pretty big gap there in, in pricing between the MML and the others. I didn't hear from anybody that your, the proposals that you had seen triggered questions in other areas than the ones that are summarized here. So hopefully you've got the information you need to discuss and come to a consensus on who you'd wish to work with. If there is a need for additional information, then I'll need to get back with various entities to get the information for you for a subsequent meeting. So I'm going to turn it back to the council and the mayor at this point to.
I've got, I've got a question for you, Ken, and I'm not sure you know the answer or not, but I think you probably do. Is it customary, is it typical, is it usual that we, we interview them and they come in for an hour and, or we say, tonight, well, I like A and B, but let's talk to them and just kind of get a feel?
You can do it either way, and other cities do. If the proposal triggers maybe a couple of favorites, it'd be nice, be nice to pare that down to the ones that you really wish to speak with. Generally, you probably notice from the proposals, these are fairly standard proposals. They talk about their process, they talk about their timeline, they talk about their qualifications, they include testimonials in some cases from other entities they work with. Those are probably a big portion of the information that a council would want, but an interview does yield direct communication with those people. So you are certainly welcome to proceed either with or without that kind of process on our side.
Because when I look at the contact people, there's only one that I recognized. I mean, maybe somebody else knows other ones, but there's one I recognized. And so I really, and I think that, in hindsight, that would have been helpful on our last one as well. I'm not sure we met the person assigned to us before.
No.
We jumped in. So that's just, council, that was, that's my thought. I don't know. Thoughts? Any just totally? I, I'll start. MML is Curtis Holt, he was city manager in Wyoming. The price is very low. I've heard, I think Roslyn Bliss and City of Grand Rapids and Mayor Vanderwood in Wyoming recently have used Baker Tilly, and I think we're pretty happy with it. I've heard good things about Gov HR. I mean, that's kind of the extent of what I, what I know about these firms. So other thoughts?
My, my thoughts, I have really good feelings about former mayor, or former city manager Holt from Wyoming and his, I think he was there for twenty, twenty-five years as city manager. The price for MML is very attractive, you know, in the situation we're at. My only question would be, last time we used MML, I think all our candidates were from the state of Michigan. And would one of these others get us a wider range of candidates outside the state? Or is that something we can ask MML to make sure they advertise beyond the state of Michigan?
Good point. See, Ken's got him down. Yeah, I don't know what's typical. I mean, I think like a firm like Baker Tilly, it's, I'm assuming it's a national firm, I think, I believe they are. And maybe some of the other ones are too, and so they're used to recruiting from, out of three, three hundred and thirty million people of this country's lot. Other thoughts, comments? Yes, sir.
I concur with everything that's been said. I really like the idea of maybe whittling it down and then getting a feel and asking some questions to get greater clarity. I agree with Councilmember Steenstra about the fee proposal being, you know, really alluring for MML. I do wonder a little bit about the placement guarantee being unspecified. So is that kind of, you know, when you have a warranty, we do one replacement and then that's it, no matter what else happens? So we're not guaranteeing any more here, that, there's a little danger in that, so.
I think we could probably ask them.
Yeah, that would be a question we definitely would want to ask. I think Curtis Holt has, you know, he's the only one I knew on this list, too, and he has a substantial network that he can draw from, and he knows this area very well, and he knows our city, and I, so I think he brings a lot to that. And then again, on paper only, I don't know, these individuals are much more beyond that, but I do like the fact that Walsh Municipal Services did reference our twenty-twenty-two community profile and that there's something that's already there in existence that we can utilize and that can save you some money. So that just seemed like they took the time to look at what the previous process had done and how we might benefit from it. So those are kind of the two that I'm leaning toward, but I don't know much about any of the others, so I can be sweet.
Yeah, Josh?
Yeah, I agree with what's been said as well. I did notice Baker Tilly is like a six-month process, whereas everybody else is about a three-month, three to four-month process, so that one seemed a little long to me. Several of these have worked with local communities in the last couple of years, so I wonder if we ought to go around and talk with some of those references that they've given. I think one of them worked with Hudsonville, one of them worked with Walker, one of them worked with, was it Ada Township? One of them worked with Georgetown Township. And there's several local references here, so I think it might be worthwhile in addition to asking the, you know, the principal representatives some questions through an interview to maybe check around with some of the local references and see what their experiences was, you know, how, how did they work for them? What was the experience? I mean, that's the purpose of having references provided, so. And I think it would be worth going back and asking MML about the placement guarantee that Justin mentioned to see if that's something that's negotiable, you know, back into another agreement if we would go with them.
Jane, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit, but you had had some experience with Gov HR. At where?
I previously worked with them a couple of years ago when I was with Hastings, and then we ended up going with MML. But I also have worked with municipalities that have worked with Gov HR. It's not, not a place where I was actually employed.
Right, right.
And one of the things they liked about Gov HR is they're regional, so they look, you know, in this, kind of this five-state area, but they're not opposed to looking outside the five-state area, and they have a broad reach. So they deal with a lot of different sized municipalities. They work with, they work with all manners of employees, so DBW people, clean water people, community development. So they, they're very well-versed in governmental from that standpoint, and they do a very thorough job and they have a nice stable of staff. They're a pretty large, I don't know if you've ever, if any of you went up to their website, but they have a very large stable of people that have a broad range of experience. So this has nothing to do with that, but my husband was recruited by Gov HR to be a temp, and they placed him in Virginia, and it was a great experience for them. So not only from the, we need to find people side, but I, you know, I would like to be employed side, I mean, they, they treat both sides with equal respect is what I, I have found.
Good thoughts? Chair?
Yeah, you kind of stole my question. I was going to ask any department head if they wanted to weigh in on this. If you guys have been around, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, six, six of you here. Yeah. Charlie? Yeah. One, two, three, four, five, six. Oh, Marcy, yeah, seven, sorry. Marcy's up here. I, I don't know if any of you wanted to weigh in on this either. Thank you, Jane, for your comments. Was there anybody else that would, that had any opinions?
I personally worked for, I had twelve city managers in my career, and I personally worked with Frank Walsh a couple of times where I was previously at the, actually, I had two managers that did not last a year and a half. I would recommend not going with him. He's not, he doesn't have a good track record. But.
Thanks.
Any other, council, any other comments?
How about the other ten, Charlie? Where'd they come from?
Well, the next one will be my thirteenth, and that's my lucky number, so that's fine.
I, I've got a couple thoughts. I know Ken has enjoyed coming back, but I'm not sure how anxious you are.
Yeah.
To go back to retirement and having fun. And I'm wondering if, and you've got some questions that can get answered pretty quickly, I think. And maybe short special meetings sometime just to get the answers to those, maybe call people back, call, you know, these lead people either on a Zoom call, or I, I don't know if they're, these particular people are like here or whatever, and just, might that be an hour well spent soon? I don't know how anxious, how long you plan on being willing to stay?
Yeah, I'm having fun, but not so much that I don't want to go back to retirement.
So maybe sooner rather than later, getting some of this pulled together?
I think, I think getting it going is important, not just from my perspective, but just to minimize the, the interim period. It's, it's having a part-time person do this, as I'm doing it, is not ideal for anybody necessarily. And so I, I think you do want to move it along, I don't think you want to delay it too much. But if you, if you have some questions or you do want to do a couple of interviews, I think we should be able to arrange that pretty promptly. On the personal end, you know, I am interested in wrapping this up before the weather turns nice and I can enjoy all those retirement activities I enjoyed last spring and summer. So I don't, and I, I wouldn't want to go so long that, on a decision, that the council is forced to consider bringing in a full-time interim because I can't stay that long. So that just is more, you know, more potential for miscommunication and, and now you gotta, now you gotta pick not only a manager, but you gotta pick an interim manager, you know, so that just kind of complicates the process. So I would encourage you to move along, that doesn't mean you have to decide tonight, but I do think you should decide as soon as possible on this so that it can, it can proceed because the timelines do take a while. Last time, I think we engaged the league in July, and the new manager started in December. You know, if we don't engage this consultant until later in January and it's the same process, you're starting to look, you know, June, May to June, you know? So I certainly wouldn't want you to take a lot of time if you're capable of moving along more faster, more quickly than that, so. But we're very happy as staff to facilitate the interview process or phone calls or whatever we might need to do to, to help the council in their decision-making.
Randy?
I guess I would say I would be comfortable with potentially looking at the MML, Gov HR, Baker Tilly, not necessarily ranked in that order. I do think that a couple negatives or concerns, obviously Baker Tilly is the most expensive and Gov HR has, it looks like there could be some potential hidden travel fees in there. And where are they, Virginia or, they're not?
They're in, they're in Chicago.
Okay, Chicago, that's not so bad. Then with the MML, I'd just kind of weigh the MML against, you know, Gov HR in the senses Curtis Holt too local, or would his scope be, you know, the pool be a smaller pool? Would he have a hard time reaching out versus, you know, Gov HR would? So I would, I would have concerns, I don't think I would be interested in Walsh or SGR.
I, I agree with what Randy just said. Those would be the three that I'm interested in. The question to MML, you don't want to be, you know, how, how big is your reach?
And it's also Mr. Holt's first, first search.
It is, I'm not sure that's true.
Because he hasn't done another search for the MML in this role, has he?
I don't know that he specifically has. I, he retired shortly after I did, so I think he'd been recently going through some training, but I don't know if he's done one or not.
I may be mistaken, but I, that was not my impression.
Another question to ask.
I, I like your top three, and in no particular order as well. Those three are, are the three that stuck out to me.
So are we willing to move pretty quickly on that? Ken can get some questions. Maybe arrange, like I said, Zoom call or in-person, wherever they are, however it works for them, like, I don't know, in a week or? And I don't anticipate the interview would be more than ten or fifteen minutes, but maybe just to get a sense of who are we going to be working with?
I think, I think if you're going to bring folks in to an interview, you probably need to spend more time with that, you know? If someone's coming from.
Yeah.
Chicago or something, you know, you might as well spend maybe not, you know, two hours, but certainly, you know, forty-five minutes to an hour.
Yeah, okay.
Just to, to get very comfortable and to make their trip worthwhile. If we're going to do something more on a, you know, subcommittee basis with a Zoom call or something like that.
Well, that's right, we, can we even use Zoom to do this?
Not as an entire council.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll defer to Matt on the details there, but I think not more than three.
I hadn't thought of that because just kind of used to Zoom call, so.
Yeah.
Other thoughts? I mean, do we want to set a potential date or? Ken, maybe, yeah, you.
I think the first question would be, would you like to do direct interviews of anybody? And if you do, then I can start working on how and when we schedule that to satisfy seven or eight schedules. I actually would add two more with the potential, or three more potential consultants. So if it's more a matter of we have some questions and we'd like to submit those and get answers to those, that's a little easier to arrange, but it may not get you what you want in terms of, you know, comfort level. So I think that's the first question I would have is what would the council be most comfortable with? Is it, is it a chance for the full council to interview? And if that's the case, then we'd be looking at a special meeting, I think, to do that on whatever basis we can pull the folks that you want to meet in.
I'm not opposed to that, but we, I think we did have a subcommittee last time, didn't we? That kind of looked at this way back when or no? I mean, I guess I like the idea of trying to expedite things with interviewing firms by, if we can do it over Zoom or, you know, it seems silly to have somebody drive three hours to come and talk to us for, you know, fifteen minutes or whatever, want to make it worth their while, but it might also expedite the process if we had a subcommittee that could kind of gather everyone's questions and, you know, do the interview on our behalf.
I think you had a subcommittee that actually worked on like contract last time, if I recall.
Yeah, maybe that's what I'm thinking.
I don't think it was with the firm because we just went with MML, I think.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's probably what I'm thinking. Posted meetings, so.
I guess I just wonder if that would maybe make things easier to schedule or to keep things moving along. And also, you know, address the meeting issues or, you know, being able to do something quicker over, you know, video conferencing.
If the, if the council's willing to designate a, a maximum three-person council subcommittee to, to do that on behalf of the full council, we could probably expedite that pretty well.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah.
Justin?
I was going to say, maybe we could combine these approaches and we could all have an opportunity to submit questions that they respond to in writing. We all look through them and see if there's any red flags or whatnot that we see emerge from that and then move forward with the subcommittee. You know, if, if we do look at something and we say, oh, it's pretty clear that person's not the one, why have them come all the way from Chicago or even set up a Zoom meeting or anything? So we might be able to get a little bit of pre-information, and if we're not all going to be on the subcommittee, we can still at least get somewhat of a feel from those response, those written responses.
Randy, I think, did you have a comment? Or did you have a comment just a couple of seconds ago? The thoughts? Council willing to designate a subcommittee to do, will do, pre-due diligence?
Here's another question, so I guess if we would go that direction, even if, I mean, if you are doing Zoom calls, can't you record them and share them with the rest of us to review? Who wanted to watch the video interview or not?
Matt, is that a thing? Can we do that?
I'm not familiar with that being done, but.
Well, it's, I mean, it's, yeah, it's not a group meeting, I guess, but.
You're not deliberating toward a decision at that point, but it does seem like an end around to the committee. an end around to the committee doing the, the due diligence, um, as a less than quorum.
We wouldn't have an opportunity to ask questions, obviously, but you'd be able to hear their answers.
I actually think it's probably okay. It's no different than the committee reporting back.
Good question, good answer.
I guess if we're looking for a subcommittee, I'd volunteer.
I would too. I'd be very interested in being on. Anybody else looking forward to serving on a committee?
Yeah, I'd be available.
I, I guess then what maybe makes some sense to me would be that the council make a motion to designate, um, you know, those three members as a subcommittee for this purpose and then I can work with them to figure out what questions need to be asked and arranged for any contacts we need to make. So if that works for council.
Is there a motion to designate JR, Tim and myself as subcommittee to take a look at that?
Motion.
Support.
Thank you for being willing to do that.
Absolutely. Anxious to do it, actually.
Is, is part of that motion to just look to those three, the MML, GovHR and Baker Tilly, is that?
Is there consensus on that?
Well, I just have one question. I understand why we're buffing out one of them because of a, a comment made, but what do we, what do we know about SGR that's keeping us from looking at them if we're looking at the other three?
Apparently not enough. I mean, no one's worked with them, no one's spoke up about experiences with them.
I don't think they had any local references either. Maybe Midland?
Yeah.
I was looking, there was a lot of them in Texas and like the.
Okay.
Big in Texas.
Pacific Northwest it looked like. That was one thing that stood out to me is they didn't have a lot of local references. Their local Midwest organizations they worked with.
So we had a motion and support on that, right, Marcy?
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maringa.
Yes.
Nordhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. And boards and commissions again.
Yeah, I guess not much for staff to add, um, add to this. Marcy did a, in addition to getting the list all right in the minutes for those four pages, um, she also did a nice job of, um, giving you the summary sheet that whittles it down to the positions that you deferred making appointments to at the last meeting. So, um, these are vacancies on existing city boards and commissions, uh, four vacancies on the Fourth of July committee, uh, two vacancies, one for a regular term and one for an alternate term on the Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, two vacancies on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and one on the Construction Board of Appeals. And, um, we'd be looking for, uh, council to reach consensus tonight on filling those vacancies. Um, it's probably worth noting that the last two are seldom meeting boards and commissions. I can't remember, you know, Construction Board of Appeals has maybe met twice in the last seven or eight years. Uh, they only deal with appeals to the building code and that happens pretty rarely. So, uh, and then the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, just because of the way Brownfield redevelopment's been treated under law and things like that, it's been just a lesser used, um, mechanism for, for redevelopment. So, um, those are, if, if you want to quantify them in terms of criticality, um, the first two are, are more important to us than the last two. Um, but it's completely up to council. It's your, your power as designated by the city charter to, to fill these slots.
Council, thoughts on, on, uh, how do you want to proceed? Which ones you'd like to start with? Any strong recommendations on any of them? Probably, well, like Ken said, the Brownfield redevelopment, nothing's happened. I mean, even if that was vacant for a bit yet, it's probably not earth-shattering.
Only, only earth-shattering if we have a reason to have a meeting.
Right. And now, and that will be such a good thing now we can all do an appointment ahead. That's just kind of what I'm thinking. Same thing with Construction Board of Appeals. Board of Zoning Appeals actually, um, yeah, they, they do things and meet and so on. So are there any thoughts about, um, particular applicants for the Board of Zoning Appeals?
I'll say that I originally went through this, um, before the previous meeting because I anticipated that we were going to vote on it then. And I kind of came up with a list of who I thought were the strongest candidates. I didn't revisit that because, um, I didn't want to go back through all of those, um, but I at least had a feeling and I, I know that they're less important, but I do think we have interest and they're very well-qualified people for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. To me, Tim Nolan and Ben Dixon, um, both looked great. Um, and then on the Construction Board of Appeals, Ken Haveman was the one who stuck out the most to me for his experience and how it would align with the requirements of that board.
I know Ben and Tim, I think Tim is on a board right now or at least. And I'm familiar with Ben as well. I mean, I'd feel very comfortable with both of those on Brownfield redevelopment. And you said, Ken?
Ken Haveman for Construction Board of Appeals.
Any thoughts or objections to either of those? Okay, is there, we'll, we'll do the kind of the easier ones first, I guess, then. Is there a motion to appoint Ben Dixon and Tim Nolan to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for three-year terms?
Some support.
Support and discussion. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Maringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. And is there a motion to appoint Ken Haveman, uh, to the Construction Board of Appeals?
Some support.
Discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Maringa.
Yes.
Nordhut.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Since we're still on the page, we're going a little backward here, but Board of Zoning Appeals, and again, they do meet and, and that's actually, it's an important board because they're considered quasi-judicial, aren't they? Appeals would go to, sort of.
From them, yep.
Yeah. Uh, Justin, since you've got the whole stack there and you.
I have to go back to my stack. The only name that I had written down, but I don't see her as an application on file expressing interest, um, but that was Christine Houston, um, for Board of Zoning Appeals. She was true. Okay, all right.
Okay.
That was the only one from that list that stuck out to me.
Any other thoughts about, um, any of the applicants?
Uh, how about Mike Sullivan? I know he got appointed to the tree board, uh, two weeks ago, but he seems to be the kind of guy who'd like to be involved in more than one board.
So I suggest. Motion?
Yes.
Before we vote on that, I also had him as a Fourth of July. I don't know how, how interested you are on how many boards, um, but I, I did think that you stood out for that one as well.
Happy to still be considered for that committee. I know ZBA very rarely meets, uh, during the course of the year, so two committees would be fine if this, something comes into your mind.
So we have a motion to appoint Mike Sullivan to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Did we have a second on that?
The regular term or?
No, no second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Maringa.
Yes.
Nordhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. So we also need to fill the alternate term. Are there any recommendations on who that?
And the alternate is only if.
The other alternate, and, or do they go back and forth between the two?
No, it's, it's to fill the gap. I mean, generally this is a board that we meet with a full board as opposed to operating with less than a full number. So if someone's not able to make it, the alternate is called. Oh, we've got two alternates ready.
Yes.
I know I served with Aaron Offering on environmental sustainability and I know his, his name is on here often and he didn't have a huge interest in serving on a lot more, but if he's an alternate, I think he would, I, I would imagine he would accept, um, serving as an alternate, knowing that they meet very rarely and the chance of an alternate not being there is, yeah, that's my recommendation.
I mean, no guarantee, but I'm thinking maybe once a year.
I mean, it kind of goes in spurts, you know, and you might not meet for six, eight months, then you might meet two months in a row, so, yeah.
But if he's an alternate, I mean, for him to actually be called, that would be, okay, that would be rare. Is there a support for that nomination?
Support.
Any other discussion? So that would be, um, Aaron Offering got to the alternate term, expiring 12/3/124. We have a motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Maringa.
Yes.
Nordhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. So go to the beginning, Fourth of July. Um, during the last couple of weeks, I need to be honest, I did not do a lot of recruiting for this. Um, and I know it's important that we get going on this, but I, my personal thought is maybe do some more recruiting. Heavy, hard recruiting. Thoughts?
Is your recommendation to, to put a pause on any nominations?
Unless you're ready to make some nominations tonight, but we don't even have enough applicants to.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. We did recently hire a Fourth of July coordinator, right?
Yeah, that's right.
A little bit better shape than we, um, than we otherwise would be, obviously, by having that person.
Just getting started. We, she came in for some, you know, paperwork late last week and she's a meeting with Marcy this week, is it?
Yeah.
Tomorrow. So we'll get her going. Uh, the, the one thing you might think about is if you do have some folks that you are, um, interested in at least getting some of them filled, my understanding is because of the number of vacancies, it's been tough to get a quorum and your new part-time director may not be able to make a lot of progress without enough people to at least have a meeting. So if you've got some, you know, even if it's only one or two, that will help get us closer to a quorum for that purpose. Am I stating that accurately?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does one person get us to a quorum?
I don't know. There's nine? Yeah.
No.
Yeah. And, you know, again, if, if we can't get there for a couple of weeks, we've just got somebody getting started, but they're gonna, we're gonna want them hit the ground running. So we're not gonna want to wait very long to get people in and we've got a, the clerk's office notifies people of their appointment and they need to, you know, ultimately agree to serve. So, um, I would, and this is another one where it's not, you know, critical that it be tonight, but it really needs to be soon.
Okay, I feel like I've got a fire underneath me to do recruiting. How best could you do this? I'm thinking maybe a couple more weeks on this one. Randy?
With both my comments, I just, I don't know.
Okay.
All right. Okay, well then we'll, uh, we'll march to what we've got so far.
Anything else, Ken?
Um, no. Let's, uh, let's wrap it up.
Okay. Councilmember comments. Randy?
I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Josh?
Oh, just, uh, thanks for the great audit. Thanks to all the department heads for all of your diligence over the last year with managing finances and making it a, I think relatively painful pro, painless process as far as the auditor goes and, you know, being good stewards of our, our funds. You usually mention it at budget time, we mention it at audit time, but thank you for all the work that you've done over the last year and happy new year, everybody.
Justin?
I agree with those comments. Thank you for the wonderful audit, um, from the finance department, but also from all the department heads and all the employees who are good stewards of taxpayer dollars. So, um, that's really appreciated, um, I know by all of us and as well as by the residents. I also wanted to thank the residents who did show up, um, even though it wasn't on the agenda and it's glad, I'm glad to see that you stayed for the duration of the meeting too. So, um, you know, hopefully in a couple of weeks here, we'll move another step forward and thank you to the property manager as well for being here and I hope that you can return, um, when that report is released in a couple of weeks so that we can have, uh, you know, a total and civil conversation about, um, what needs to be done. Um, I also wanted to say that I had the honor of attending the planning commission meeting, um, prior to this meeting, and so I have a few shout-outs from that. Um, it was just really great. I've, in recent times since I've been elected, I've only attended two of those meetings. And it just so happened that these ordinances were at both of the meetings that I attended, so I got to see the progression of that. And it was just wonderful to see, um, how well our planning commission operates. We have a wonderful chair who runs the meetings, um, in a very efficient manner. We have very dedicated residents who serve on that and, uh, always seek to make decisions in the best interest of the residents. And so like they found with each of these incidents, um, they were able to find some workarounds to help the, those who brought these great ideas to them. So it's just wonderful to see. And then my final shout-out goes to Marcy, um, because I know that there was some apprehension by Ken, um, would we be able to see these on this agenda? Because it takes a lot of prep work, especially when that was done, um, relatively, you know, not that far in the past. And so for her to have all of these resolutions complete and then also come up with, um, these, uh, ordinances in time for this meeting, it just shows how dedicated she is. So shout out to you as well, Marcy. Thank you very much.
Here, here, to what's been said, I have nothing additional.
I have nothing to add, thanks. Yeah, Justin, thank you, uh, kudos to all the departments that are here and all the services we've been doing. Uh, it's kind of neat to see a new street name in Granville. I saw Red Mill was posted. That was kind of fun. Uh, thank you, Mr. Patel, for joining us tonight. Appreciate your comments and being here. Uh, thank you for coming. And, uh, a couple of us got to visit the community slash senior center today. Uh, that was nice. Um, Rin is a fantastic, uh, director over there. She has a lot of heart and passion for our seniors, um, and she has some modest requests, I think, coming down the line for us, but I think we really need to pay attention to that. That's, that, uh, that place and what it does for our residents. So it was, it was fun. That's it.
Great. Thank you to the Environmental Sustainability Committee for hosting the cardboard recycling event. I came with a full Bronco full of stuff.
You know what I do have? I should have said that, Steve, if I, if you may, I, I did get, uh, some info on how much we did collect at that event. Again, it was rather large. Um, see, I can get this in one second here or not. It, I think it was over 2,000 pounds of cardboard, um, and, uh, three of those very large styrofoam containers that are my arms by my arms wide, uh, full of styrofoam. So I think it was, they said it was the highest collection we've ever done with them.
And it was super well organized too. I mean, I came there, put the, it was immediately taken, sorted out. It was, it was great. Um, also, um, I kind of, a shout-out to our two folks from the Clean Water Plant today. Ken and I and some folks from Clean Water Plant met with, um, State Senator Winnie Brink, who I believe is the Senate Majority Leader, as well as our state rep, Carol Glanville, as well as Representative Hood. Um, I'm not sure exactly where her district is, but I believe that her background is in environment, particularly in environmental issues, talking about possible grants and funding for some very exciting special projects. And I was just impressed at, and they were impressed how knowledgeable both of you were and what a great tour we had. And, um, I'm very hopeful that you got their attention. I know you did. So, thank you. Very, um, yeah, very impressed with your presentation, Todd, and, and yours as well, Scott. So, good folks. Last item is, uh, we'd be recessing to closed session?
Adjourned.
Adjourned to a closed session to discuss pending litigation, in particular the commercial Uh, adjourned to a closed session to discuss pending litigation, in particular, the commercial tax appeal. For.
Let me see which hotel that says.
It's, uh, Granville Hospitality.
Granville Hospitality and.
Or Granville Inn and Suites.
Granville Inn and Suites.
Yes, thank you.
Charlie, there you are. You're, it's on the tip of your tongue. Uh, so is there a motion to go into that closed session?
Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Yes.
Maringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. In the interest of expediting this and getting people home, uh, I suggest we move down the hall.
Okay.
So you can quickly go into this.
All right. We will meet in a couple of minutes?